Mr. Kelly. Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Matt. Ms. Paul, Mr. Lee. Mr. Robinson.
President. Okay, the rules rise for the pledge. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Is there anything that's on there to speak this evening?
Yes, Sandy Weber is online.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi, Ms. Weber.
Hi, how are you?
Great.
Great, that's good to hear.
Okay, so you're up, so you signed up to speak for public time.
Sure, hello, I'm Sandy Weber, I'm a Hampshire resident and we're a big proponent of backyard chickens, I spoke at one of the previous meetings, I think back in the fall, yeah, we just feel like, again, I wanted to reiterate, you know, one of the reasons that we think it would be a great experience for us personally is that our special needs son, he has to kind of stay more at home still because of COVID and everything, so we'd like to give him an experience of raising chicks, to be able to see the whole process of, you know, raising chicks and watching them grow and feeding them and kind of a mini job for him, and then be able to collect the eggs and know that, you know, you don't just go to the grocery store and here's your eggs, you get them at the store, no, this is how this all happens and he also lost his service dog in February, so he's really in need of something and there's a lot of other families I know that are interested, Hampshire residents, and I really feel that unless you're serious about doing it right, you're not going to get into this because it's, you know, you've got to stick to all the regulations and everything, so I did speak to a chicken farmer, a local chicken farmer who has a flock of 800 chickens, they've had no problems because I asked him about the bird flu and he said, no, there's been no problems, it's very been very low incidents, not even close to him, you know, and he said in your case with backyard chickens, they're so, you know, contained, he said, you're not going to have any problems with them because they're going to be in a coop, they're not going to, you know, be around other wild animals or wild birds, so he felt that, he also felt that it was a good experience for families to do together, something that might even bring our community together in just a little way, sharing experiences and failures and little glitches along the way and so, and also there would be the revenue that would come from that, you know, you have to get a building permit and I was kind of calculating that, you know, if it's $75 to $100 building permit, you know, I don't know how many families the board is considering allowing this to start out, but I think you're going to get some serious people that would keep it up, would, you know, be pretty conscientious and, yeah, and, you know, they eat insects and mosquitoes, I like the whole idea that they can eat mosquitoes, don't like those in the backyard, great for fertilizer if you let them, you know, go out for maybe, you know, they're in their area and so just a lot of great, you know, I did speak to the village of Burlington today and they said, we're waiting for Hampshire to adopt it so that we can put on what you guys do so that we can do it and I'm like, oh, okay, so all the other surrounding villages are very happy, they really don't have any, anything negative to say and they said it's been very, believe it or not, community building, even in Elgin, people share experiences and, oh, if you feed your chicken this, you can get this kind of a better yolk and they just share things that I guess bring people together, so I just wanted to share that again and, you know, I've done quite a bit of research, if you have any questions, you know, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you very much for coming tonight, thank you for your comments. Anyone have questions for Ms. Weber? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm just going to mute myself and I'll stay on just to see how it goes tonight.
All right, well, you're welcome to do so, don't fall asleep.
Don't worry, I won't, I got Max Tom, thank you.
All right, so before you, you have the meeting minutes from Thursday, May 19, 2022, please review them at this time.
Okay. Page nine.
Uh-oh.
I found something.
The clerk's making her own adjustments to her own minutes.
The second paragraph, the sign should be up next week, chicken dip, chicken dip is still incorrect.
There's another one.
I got that one too.
Which one?
Page eight.
Page eight, yeah. Yeah.
Did I see it?
The vote.
T O T in Kane County.
Thank you, yes.
So the vote, trustee Cole cannot be absent and in either of the two, trustee Kelly.
All right.
C H E.
First voting.
Motion approved in May 19, 2022, regular county.
He's good.
It is, maybe he was absent.
He was absent. It's the same in the next vote also, for the treat payment and trees up limited. Eyes and absent.
That's the one I was reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, that was part of the discussion.
She got it in case.
We're going to put a jar on the bar here, anytime that there's a mistake here.
To be fair, they're probably my mistakes.
Good thing you didn't have orders in the yard.
Buck. Buck.
A dollar.
All right, everyone, so does anyone else have any changes or corrections? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes with changing as changes discussed. Questions, comments? Please.
Ms. Folder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Upstate.
Ms. Paul, Mr. Lee. Aye. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
The pass, aye, one absent, one missing.
Okay, so you want me to kind of help you through this, Mr. Ed, Mrs. Beth?
I'm happy to read the motions as long as I can, with first one, right?
Okay, because you just said where you want me to tap in.
I'll just introduce the first one, now the next one, the first one is a person to do best consideration of a motion to approve a professional services agreement, E P I, comprehensive utility master plan update for 198,903, you have the agenda supplement for you, and this was tabled last, at the last meeting to correct some language, they referred to file engineering, that language has been removed, so we believe that the current contract is ready for your consideration of voting.
Think that there were some good points brought up at the last meeting about the language in the contract, so I think a lot of that was removed, does anyone have any concerns about languages in this presented tonight? I see red.
I didn't have the green pen.
That's never good.
No, no, I just had a question, on page 20, just to kind of clarify, the 90% payment, so it's number 1A1, and it was that 90% of it is going to be paid, so are we, I just want to see how that goes, does that mean that's like about 15,000 monthly that we're going to pay towards this, or is it just based on what work is done and we pay 90% of that, it just wasn't clear to me.
Mr. Paulson's on the line here.
Yeah, we will invoice as the work is done until, you know, up to 90%, and then the rest would be paid upon completion of the project. So it'll go monthly based on how much, you know, how many hours we've expended that month on the project.
But not to exceed being the final amount.
Correct.
It's not 90% of what we bill that month, it's what's billed and then at the end, 10% will be kept till everything's done.
Yes, kind of retain.
Okay, okay. Thank you, I just was a little unclear.
Anyone else have any other questions or need clarification, yes, Mr. Kelly?
I do have a question on attachment B exhibit 2, descriptions of scope and services. When I went through this, I see we've got site visits to wells, water treatment plants and wastewater treatment facilities and lift stations, and there, from what I see on here, it looked like we were doing specific areas and modeling which were limited to areas. North area, tollway service area, Briar Hill service area, undeveloped areas. Higgins Road Lift Station, I'm not seeing like the main part of the residential area of Hampshire, or some of the older parts of Hampshire, or even some of the other subdivision that's there.
So the areas that you just mentioned are the areas that we're going to be exploring the options to extend our structure there because those are developing areas where we don't have any structure.
I thought the bid was for an overall evaluation.
Oh, it is, it's evaluated, part of that evaluation is how we service those areas, specifically to Briar Hill Road where we have belt and the water sewer, and also the other area you mentioned.
Yeah, so when I see the modeling, I'm not, I'm just not seeing anything, I guess, Mr. Paulson, can you verify that this study will be a comprehensive study for all areas within the village limits and that there is just additional work being done in those areas, or is this only in those areas?
No, this will cover the whole village, so the, you know, the first work items under that section of the water distribution system planning and modeling is to create an existing water model for the entire system and then we're going to do specific studies, as Jay mentioned, of certain, you know, certain future service areas and exist, and certain of the existing items like the Higgins Road Lift Station that we know needs to be assessed in order to expand the service area, so we'll be doing a lot of analysis on the, you know, at the back end of it on future service, but the first part of it is to build the existing model that covers everything.
Okay, so we're not going to get models for any of the needs in the main, like in the other communities outside of this?
Yeah, we're getting an entire.
I'm just trying to understand why we're specifically calling out certain areas and then.
Because those are areas that we had concerns about.
Wouldn't they be included in the overall model, if we're saying it's.
If I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tim.
I was just saying, you know, the areas we specifically call out are future service areas, you know, areas we need to extend service to for identified areas that are, you know, the village is interested in future development, so that, that is those specific ones we're looking at that are not included in the existing system and seeing how we can extend service to those areas.
So develop water work system improvement plan is for the areas that you're talking about that are not developed that we may need to expand into because of future development needs.
What's?
One for the existing, so I'm looking at like 4.02, 4.03, then I see there's 4.05, like these are where those specific areas are called out, 3.07, 3.08, 3.06 says model benefit of proposed modifications to existing system.
Correct. Yes, that would be, you know, looking at what might need to be modified or updated within the existing system and service area, and then we're also looking at future service.
You were, it says north area tollway facility service area, or Briar Hill service area, or undeveloped areas, or north area tollway service area, those are all currently do not have a system, it's an evaluation and model of the future development of that area, there is no current system in those areas, that's why it's called out separately.
Yes, I mean, consider the north area tollway, obviously we have properties up there and service up there, but there is quite a bit of area that developers are talking about to the village about beyond what is existing, so, you know, it's looking at expand, in that case, we're looking at expanding an existing service area to incorporate several additional developments.
Okay, so would then, am I correct in understanding that we would also receive a water work system improvement plan and a wastewater collection and conveyance plan for the entire area that exists within the village limits, that's going to go?
Yes, we would identify improvements or maintenance to the existing system that needs to be done to support both the existing system and any future developments, because there may be things in the existing system that need to be, you know, need to be looked at and assessed based on, you know, the current conditions, but also based on future conditions.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, so it's just confusing to me that we have things separated out.
It's been a couple of meetings since we had a PowerPoint presentation on the whole study, so it's.
Yeah.
And you may have.
With my final question, with the study, I'm thinking back to some of the report that Mr. Hatch has provided about State Street, about how once we got under things, we learned a lot, right, especially with the water systems. Is this going to give us a full mapping and understanding of our entire water system as it exists when the study is done?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to give a caveat there, Tim, I think we have to be careful with that, unless we tear up every intersection in town, we won't know where all the water lines are downtown, we had to dig to find some of them here.
Correct, right.
Old neighborhoods, that's not part of our plan, is map lists, the manholes and some of the things that have been paved over, for example, and it's probably worse downtown here.
Yeah.
Than anywhere else.
And totally get that, I'm just trying to understand how we get an improvement plan if we don't understand where everything is and what it is.
Well, this will identify the main, you know, the transmission lines, you know, we're not, it won't have, you know, every, every unknown four inch and six inch and, you know, that spider web of stuff that exists downtown, but it will have the main transmission lines.
I just know that that had come up in the State Street and I thought maybe this would help.
I just want to get the question, we'll have every manhole covered and every valve because some of them have been buried.
Yeah, and I appreciate that because my thought of this is when I'm hearing we will map out the entire system is that we would have some type of digital representation that shows, here's everything you have in the size of those.
And new areas, we do have that, and by the way, we've been through decades of drawings and Atlas Maps in the last two weeks and we're adding all the manhole covers and all the valves and everything that we're finding now, adding them to the Atlas Map in the downtown area, so we're, and we'll be doing the same thing at 72, we had our first construction meeting for that intersection, it was a lot of water improvement also going under 72, so we had that meeting just yesterday, and so we'll be coordinating that side down, but we have the same situation down there where we'll be mapping valves and things that we find.
Okay, thank you very much, and I know these are probably basic questions, so I appreciate your patience with me while I try to understand.
Any questions?
I have a quick something, our trustee host just mentioned that this has been our engineering from the last 25-ish years, if that's correct, okay, so do we have maps of things that have changed in the last 25 years?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
The issue is like what we find downtown is we have maps for the last 25 years or so, but the street hasn't seen a light day in 60 years.
Right.
And there's a lot of band-aids and stuff, so our guy's got, not bad mouth in public works.
No.
Okay, but historically, now, if there's a water main break or something like that and they do a Band-Aid fix, they don't necessarily go back and update the maps, or tell the engineers that the fix had been applied, and then you forget about it, and you grill up the street, you find some of this stuff.
Okay.
I mean, it's just kind of, you know, Band-Aids and stuff.
So there's the prior to 25 years plus of the.
Yeah, and one of those projects, one of those projects is what we abandoned, the four inch line on Main Street, which is still a mystery for us, and we talked to, we had everybody involved, Brad Sanderson was working for the village at the time, with the village, and that was C P L, E P I, and Brad remembered that the Public Works Director at the time had half of the town shut off just to get that water line shut off, so we've abandoned it, and we don't want to do that again, we can't afford to shut up half the town and experiment for, you know, for three or four days, we're trying to keep the water shut off downtown to a minimum, a week from Monday on the 13th, we're planning to shut up downtown for eight hours from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we've dropped all the businesses already, and so we're already working on that, but otherwise, I think we're, it's going really well, but that is something that we're finding certainly is a lot of mysteries under, under almost 100 years of destruction.
I can just add just one comment then, on page 28, on the attachment D, we're, because we tabled it, we're about two to three weeks behind where everything is kind of calendared and set, are we going to update that just so we know if we're still on schedule?
We will do, you know, everything we can to stick to the schedule or, you know, to catch up on the schedule from being a couple of weeks behind on the start, I think we're okay keeping the, you know, the end date where it's at.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
With that, hearing no other concern, I will entertain a motion to approve a professional services agreement with E P I for comprehensive utility master plan update for $198,903. I am first. And a second, any other questions, comments, discussion? Go, go, please, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul, Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Folder.
Aye.
We should pass this.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
What was that, Mr. Paulson?
I just said, thank you.
All right.
That's your consideration of motion to approve the first payment to Alliance Contractors for Street State Project in the amount of $252,416.70, we have before you the documentation and the new waivers required for payment, and Tim, Ms. Clerk, if you have any questions.
Fairly routine, does anyone, I mean, the project's going very well, again, we've run into some snakes and stuff, we talked about that last meeting and Mr. Ed is, I'm sure. We've got all kinds of stories about the last few weeks.
Yeah, but honestly, both Alliance and their underground contractor, many of them great to work with, they brought in special equipment a couple of times, very short notice, a couple hours' notice, once last week, been very pleased, they have a lot of experience in this. They're good crews to work with.
And any other questions?
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the first payment to Alliance Contractors for the Street State Project in the amount of $252,416.70.
Go, go, second. First and second, questions or comments?
I just wanted to see how much, about how much we are over to date, to like a general idea, this is, I'm estimating like 20% of the total.
Oh, no, we're not even, right now, we're roughly $45,000. And some of those are still in process, but yeah, I'm confident at this point that we'll be under $100,000, well, we're just, and some of those we'll find out next week.
Okay, and like the 20%, I was thinking was the 20% of the total cost is what we are paying tonight, that's what we're 20% for, so I don't think we're 20% over, I just wanted to clarify that, so.
We've been, we've been authorizing all the changes in the field, some of them have been on a backup pickup truck, some were down at the town's office yesterday, but yeah, I'd say right now we're about $40,000.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Clerk, do you call a roll?
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Folder.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Paul, Mr. Lee.
Aye.
We should pass this, zero.
Okay.
Now we ask for your consideration for the second payment to Kane County Excavating for the connection to the Water Main Project in the amount of $186,423.80, that would bring the total to $401,259 to date, that project is really progressing, they crossed Cross Gas Road today, so the hype is late, and they'll start tomorrow, they're going to start going back and putting in the fire nitrous, and then eventually connecting to the P R E valve, so that project's going to look a lot well, if you like combat zones, they have to keep gas road open, that's one of our rules, so feel free to just drive through there, and the flagman will move them over and get them out of your way and drive right through and see the, see the construction close.
Do you remember how times they'll tell you, you're number one.
Yeah. They know my power, but it's coming every day.
All right, so again, this is fairly routine, does anyone have any questions about the project or payment?
I just wanted to say, I was impressed that there's nothing that's been added or deducted, I mean, we're right where we should be, so I just wanted to know.
We were able to shut off the valve, shut that water up the first try.
Okay, no, I commend that, I mean, for, there's absolutely nothing over.
I will entertain a motion to approve the second payment to Kane County Excavating for the connection Water Main Project in the amount of $186,423.80.
So. Questions, comments, Ms. Clerk?
Ms. Paul, Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Folder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
We should pass this, zero.
This line says something on the agenda for us tonight.
I do, so this is the same time each year that we, that you approve the increase in garbage collection rates, you will recall that last year with flood waters, we actually reduced garbage rates 12.8% to seniors and 9.5% to non seniors, so we are increasing the same, or upcharging, if you will, the same 65 cents to seniors that we did last year, and the same $1 per month for non seniors, so there's a 1.9% increase in garbage rates this year.
This is representative of the rates that we're paying with flood, they go up every year as well, so.
That's correct.
So we are adjusting our rates to coincide with the increase from flood that we agreed to in the contract.
We have about 2,754 garbage customers currently and even with the increases, we're still below our. Our waste management rates, let's put it that way.
So does anyone have any questions about the collection fees?
I just have one question, do we know how many senior rate customers there are?
There, I could get you the exact number, but approximately 400.
Any other questions? With that, I will approve, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 22-07, a resolution adopting the updated garbage collection fees. And first, second, any other questions, your comments, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Folder.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Paul, Mr. Lee. Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
We should pass this.
We've talked about this a bunch of times, Mr. Ray, if you would, can you guys through this agenda supplement, please?
Sure, these are essentially the same regulations on home occupations that were presented for discussion at your last meeting, this is now going through public hearing at planning and zoning commission level, they had their discussion, I can turn to Rock here, any questions for him, Planning and Zoning Commission did vote to recommend approval 421, and just one quick note on the regulations themselves, I think the only comments about them at the board meeting, the prior board meeting, was related to home occupations involving animals, dog walkers and the sort, and so instead of prohibiting home occupations involving animals entirely, we simply called out the animal control regulations, so they would have to follow those like any residential would, if there's any other questions about the specific regulations, I'm happy to go through them.
Just right, I apologize, put you on the spot, I saw that it was 41 was the vote, you kind of gave us a 3,000 foot over you of your discussion.
Actually, the bulk of our conversation was actually in regards to similar to the animals, our child occupancy, our ordinance was presented at a part of the number of 12 children, there wasn't enough clarity for us as to state requirements are for daycare, we extended it a little bit, but matrix, if the children are under four, you have this number, so that was the bulk of our discussion, and again, similar, because we're racing, our recommendations to kind of call out specifically the state law on child daycare.
Hey, I'll put it out to discussion for the board.
We include that in this, a reference to D C F S home care regulations?
Yes, and not specifically to D C F S, but it's, I believe, G2A, says attendance in children, attendance of children and numbers allowed by current state regulations, but not more than 12, and current state regulation would be 12 at maximum, so if you would like to change that limit yourselves, you can absolutely do that, you can reduce it, make it more restrictive to the state, but does collude to state regulations.
But the state regulation may be restrictive in some, just like an H.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I know in D C F S licensed care facilities, there is a.
Yep.
A limit based on age of children and how they can be per adult in the room.
Correct. Yes, so rather than trying to include that whole matrix in here, we just alluded to current state regulations.
I, uh, I personally, my thought would be to remove that number twelve in general and just refer to the state guidelines because as we've learned in our ordinances over the years, we specify specifics and then the state changes our, changes their rules and then our ordinances conflict with the state guidelines.
My question would be, is there a reason why we did not reference specifically DCFS? Because an unlicensed daycare shouldn't be operating at all?
True.
Um, but if our home occupation is just being permitted.
Uh, the only reason I think I do this because DCFS is not the only agency that regulates home, that cares, um, Department of, uh, I think Health and Human Services, is that a state department?
Is it not?
Does DC, does DCFS even have any jurisdiction in your home?
Yes.
Yes, there's, you have to have a license through them.
There was, there was a line I saw in one of the drafts and I apologize, I don't have this, then it was a very generic line right at the top of it that says that you, whatever purpose you're trying to do must comply.
Yeah, that's, uh, E or C eleven, the third home occupation shop applied with all applicable federal, state, local laws, regulations, validation. So. So you have to get your license.
Yeah, so, so not specifically referencing DCFS that regardless, they would have to go through that process to even be daycare or to be complying with that one. Because if they're operating a daycare and they have a, they're DCFS, they're violating.
Period. Yeah.
So that's why I'm, I'm more of a generic kind of guy. That's why I'm, I'm not liking that the number fall within the number of people, of, of children because that's already covered by the state. That's just, that's just my sense.
I agree.
Are you saying it should just be attendance of children in numbers allowed by current state license regulations?
Yes.
Do you understand that DCFS says that if you have more employees, that you can have more than twelve?
No.
This is.
That is, yes, it is, and that's what I'm telling you about.
But here is, this goes to another.
They could have fifteen, they could have twenty if you have the number of adults. It's based on the number of adults.
However, I think we have that covered because, and this, well, as of right now, but this is another area that I should mention on because in here it says that no employee who is domiciled in a dwelling unit, who is not domiciled in a dwelling unit shall be present in connection with or otherwise participate in operation on use of state. So you can't like hire employees to raise your kids.
Okay, but how does that work with an adult, a child that may be living at home? Just curious.
They live there.
No, I, I understand. So that brings back to what if you have five kids, uh, to the age of seventeen, eighteen.
DCFS does not.
No, 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 I'm saying, no, but I'm saying they could be, they could be employees and they live there.
No, they cannot unless they are certified.
Right, so, but let's say this, they go through that and then you have a neighbor that's got thirty kids in their house because all their adult kids are certified DCFS. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to play the opposite side of the card. So maybe twelve is a good.
I am the maximum here. I am advocating the maximum.
I understand.
Oh, because my neighbor across the street, my neighbor's doing a daycare. I am used to the drop off, pick up traffic. Um, and so I'm familiar with what that is like, um, as a neighbor who is not running any care in my home. And it's every single day, you know, especially Monday through Friday and, um, it is.
I'd have a lot of things to.
Oh, yeah, right.
No, I'm, I'm.
I'm just saying, I, I am advocating for. No, I.
I'm not gonna die in that.
Now that you've explained that, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, does that, okay, so does anyone have any other, I'm not trying to rush this along.
I do want to leave E two, the one I just brought up.
Sure.
So here it states that no employee who is not domiciled in a dwelling unit where home occupation is conducted shall be present in connection with or otherwise participate in the operation of home occupation. So the way that this is reading is that if, if I'm a realtor and I have somebody come over to, for us to do planning of open houses over a weekend, they are working. It is my home-based business. They cannot be at my home working with me during this. Or if I'm a, I don't know, one of the home salespeople and I need to do inventory and I have a, an administrative assistant, they can't come into my home to help me do inventory. Like this limit, this says that absolutely no work will be done for that home-based business by anybody other than those that live in that. Or am I reading it?
I think that would be correct.
I think you're reading it right.
Okay. Well, you might, uh, put in something to the effect of no, uh, regular attendance of other employees or something of that nature.
Well, I know that there was a builder in town, uh, that operated out of his home and he hired a part-time secretary that would come in to do bookwork or financial work and stuff like that. And she would come and go every day because that was their office, was on the home. And so by that nature of it, this would be.
I'm, I guess that's what I'm asking. Do we have a concern about something like that?
I'm not suggesting that you have, you know, maybe, maybe putting a limit. You know, if you, at that same point of, you know, you don't want to have a crew of ten people every day working out of your house, but at the same time, you know.
But we already have other limits in there that you can't have more cars than would normally be in a residential area. You can't cause more traffic than in a residential. Like we already have a lot of stipulations to protect the neighbors in that area. I just wondered with this specific one.
So, yeah, if you need to bring in somebody every quarter, every month or something, I don't have a problem with that.
But I, so, sorry, you, so what about like the use case with the builder that it's somebody that, maybe they're part-time, they're half the day, but it's one person that's in the house doing book, bookkeeping.
And it's the same as my mother-in-law coming over and watching my kids every day when I'm at work, you know? The same thing.
Or my neighbor, you know, who has the home health nurse that comes for half the day.
So maybe we just.
Traffic.
So maybe we just take that out completely. And I mean, I, I mean, I don't, I, I think, I think it's regulated up at the top as far as what the use case is, but.
And the number of people that can be there.
But it's either that or you say no more than X amount of people that don't live there to work there at any given time. I mean, it's, it's either take it out or.
Who's gonna? Sorry, who's gonna be the one watching to make sure that that, that you don't have one of your employees?
Neighbors.
They'd be complaint-based, right? So it's if a neighbor calls it in and then we've got to go check and be like, did you have somebody working out of your house?
I mean, that would be a fairly.
You know what I mean? And I think that's different than the example of I have a crew of ten people that show up every single day. And this is like, I turned it into a commercial location.
So then I think we need to set it as a limit, like longer.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that would be an easy thing to do theoretically, like if they all drive, the police could drive by and run the plates and see what the cars are registered.
Yeah, they're not.
I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm just asking like how that would be.
This is, this isn't the zoning code, so what we enforce by the police, it will be enforced by our building department or our staff.
So, so how, so the, the only reason I'm asking.
I do think you're suggesting to take that language out is, is a good one, right, because the number, the number is so subjective.
Right.
And trying to identify how many there are. And I think you're, you're already regulating pretty well.
Then I, then I would, how does the board feel about moving E two completely? Which would be not, uh, no employee that doesn't live there can be there.
I find that too. And, and the fact that one is important because it's the operator has to be with the dwelling.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
It's, it's a, it's a your home base.
Your home. The only thing that I was concerned with is the, can we get that, that is fine. At the point, if we remove point two, then we don't need the point one and we're just going to include it as the state. It, it was an English teacher grammar thing and it's fine. It's not a big deal. Sorry.
So, so.
I said that if we remove point two, then, then we'll have non-parallel structure and it's gonna drive me nuts because you can't have a point one if you don't have a point two. It's not a big deal. It's fine.
Oh, I see.
It's just.
So per, per system, then is a full ordinance, are we okay?
Yeah, we just would, you know, move that to the previous line and it would be fine.
It would be similar to how A is represented.
Correct.
Okay, they're already filed.
No, that's fair.
Well, it's also my.
Just heard a motion for that, Rusty, for.
No, when we make the motion, we'll make sure that it's got proper grammar.
Absolutely.
I have two, uh, points just to make. Um, under C four, um, no stock in trade shall be displayed or sold upon premises. Stock in trade may be inventoried inside the premises. And I just made a list of all these little home-based businesses that I thought might have an issue with that, like a, a pampered chef lady or a candle person or, um, tastefully simple, um, which would be home-based businesses, which are usually conducted, the shows that they do for selling a product are done in someone else's home. But I do know of them, they'll have like a special sale, you know, Avon, you know, clearance type stuff and they'll have it in the home. And so that eliminates that from happening.
I think also I would raise the question on the sold upon the premise is for those that sell through the web, you're technically selling at the premise. Is that covered in here? Or is that excluded? Like, does that not include, uh, e-commerce style sales?
I would think that that's specific to physically at the premises.
Okay, so like you can't have a showroom on a retail location out of your house is basically what this is saying.
Right.
But first, for like my examples, like a, you know, I, I know a lady I get candles from is doing a blowout sale and she's trying to get rid of all the inventory and, yeah. And so she's trying to get, they're not from the village here though. Um, but she's trying to get rid.
Right.
It's, she's just trying to get rid of it. She's calling it almost like, you know, really old antiquey type of stuff from, you know, twenty years ago that she's, but she's doing it at the house.
So it's like a garage sale.
Kind of, yeah, but it's.
Garage sale with a lot of candles.
But. She's doing it to her customers and so, but I mean, but technically then that would not be allowed.
Well, if it's a, it's a, the problem is that you didn't want a lot of traffic and people's calls, so we were just trying to hit that target.
And this is so infrequent that, I mean, it's maybe twice.
And then we would have to agree with somebody and we'd have to catch them, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And I think too, taking it out does open it up to somebody actually putting a retail location.
Okay.
Right, I, I see the situations you're talking about, but I also don't think that we'd want a neighbor where they have inventory that you have to go to their house, look at what it is, buy it, and you have people coming and going all the time. So that's great.
At the end of the day, I mean, this isn't because we want to stop this stuff from happening. It's to be able to address the places and stuff, if there are any, and trying to look into the future, so.
That's why how, how I took it is like, we want to encourage people to be able to do this. We al, we also want to protect the neighbors from.
You know, fifty cars and semis unloading and. I'm safe.
Blowout sale every Monday morning.
Yeah.
And a blowout sale on candles, that's out of the.
That stocking tray could be anything. Talk about candles here. What about if it's skids of, uh, greens and paper, bigger item like that, that's, you know, and we're not talking about small stuff. That, that's open-ended. Doesn't really tell you where you stop that even stocking tray. It could be.
You could put a skid of paper in your garage, wouldn't it be without a tray?
Well, that was just me, just using that as a reference, but it could be any.
It can't be outside, so.
It could be huge, it could be candles and paper, probably not good outside either way.
How much?
I think it's okay that it's, that it's, uh, vague like that.
Opening.
How do you, how would you suggest we change it?
I'm, I'm just bringing it to my mind. Oh, that's very open-ended and, uh, so anything they wanted to, you know, how.
Well, yeah, but it also lays around in the ordinance and speaks about safety as issues and that kind of stuff. So I think the, the terminology, anything in their home, I don't know that it's, it's that, but, um.
Yeah, it says you can't create any hazard or you can't.
So like if your neighbor's got like a whole bunch of paper in their garage, if, you know, from floor to ceiling, that would be a violation of like a fire. I'm not saying that you're wrong. I'm just, I mean, how would you?
Uh, it's, it's very open. Anything you say can be inventory, where is inventory, it's got one hundred, thousands, ten thousand. It's very, very open. And so I can't, it's, it's imitation.
I don't know how we'd address it.
It says inventory inside the premises, so I think, I mean, what goes on in your home is your business when it starts leaking into the outside and the garage and outside, you know, and, but then it says that you can't have it outside.
Yes, I understand.
So the fact is, is if it's something small like jewelry or something large like, uh, you know, fertilizer, um, couting soil or something, now it would start to stack up and then.
Stocking tray could be.
Right, yeah.
As long as it's not a hazard or nuisance, it's your home.
I wanted to sell a lot of baseball bats or something.
I'm just thinking of bigger, like, like, uh, cause extra traffic to, to. She used to move bigger stuff.
Well, that's already called out the ordinance. Yeah. So I think it's open-ended, but I think that all, most of the concerns that most would think of are addressed with the other regulations. I mean, if, if you feel strongly about something and can suggest a way to change it, I'm all about it. I'm not trying to put you on the spot either.
No, I just thought the wording of it was very open-ended and, and no limitations.
Right. Well, I think the limitations are done with the other regulations.
Maybe it should be further, it should be.
The law requires that you bring the entire set of regulations together anyway. If that helps you. And if the judge was looking at this argument, if you look at the entire.
Uh, the whole thing.
The whole thing, interpret it all together.
So like, it's just, they can't just pick a piece out of it and say, well, I'm not.
General, that guy, yeah, that makes sense.
I had one. Sure. Uh, C ten. C ten. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that absolutely no firearm will be within this dwelling at any time for sale or transport or for whatever reason.
C C ten.
Page. C C six. Oh, um, also.
It does state that pretty clearly, because it says the presence of firearms, ammunition, or dangerous chemicals.
Fifty-four, sorry. Okay.
I apologize.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it's absolutely included. Okay, any type of firearm or weapon. And also, this isn't going in the zoning code, so it's not enforceable by police. However, would that be an instance where police would be enforcing that stipulation of the entire ordinance?
If, if we have a zoning issue that turns into a, uh, a threatened situation, certainly use a place for support.
Okay.
Does that, does that answer your question?
I guess.
If we, if we get a notice that somebody believes there's a gun sale's going on, sees somebody carrying a, a house.
You take the police with it?
I mean, if somebody's carrying a weapon, we certainly send the police.
Okay.
To that, but otherwise it would be a notification and then, you give them a warning and ask them to cease and desist. If they don't show up in order, we find them and all that, so that it's, it's all in the zoning code.
Okay, then.
I mean, if it's a dangerous situation with firearms involved, that, then we call the police.
Okay.
Shouldn't have.
I want to make sure we, we have an avenue where that doesn't get out. Whether it's a dreadful situation, dangerous or not, um, we won't see what's going on, what we're coming to do these days. So, that's my concern. So do we need a permit set that the police can enforce in that type of situation?
Not in my opinion. I feel like this is a zoning issue.
Okay.
Um, and if the police are not needed for emergency situation or a threatened situation. I believe that through example, I'm just gonna use the example. We don't send our public works employees in low people's lives because we don't want them to be in any kind of threatening situation.
Right.
But if somebody else was in, think they were, the police would go right away.
Okay.
Whether it's a public works employee or somebody walking out of a house with a gun, it looks suspicious. And you're helping.
I am. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Paul Street?
Nurse, um, C six, um, no refuse and access of the amount allowable for regular residential pickup shall be generated by any home occupation. And I, I throw out furnaces and water heaters. Um, that's something that we have a lot of plumbing companies, a lot of furnace, heating and air conditioning type places and you'll see them, right, you know, they'll have furnaces out there, pieces of equipment and. you'll see them, right, you know, they'll have furnaces out there, pieces of equipment, and if they're able to get a minimum wage sticker or whatever, or they go through the garbage company and the garbage company agrees to pick it up, that's allowable, this, this would be a little challenged by it because it's more than the amount allowable for regular residential pickup, but we allow for our garbage company to have additional stuff with them. So.
Then that's, then that's regular stuff.
Well, but the the issue is, is like, if you have a water heater every other week.
Yeah.
Or water heater every week.
You know.
I mean, that's, 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 doesn't fit in your can. So to your point.
So somebody complains, there's a plumber next door that's putting a garbage, putting uh their water heater out every week, then we can cite, write in the citation for a warning. Make sure they're not.
We can certainly.
Are you seeing that repeatedly, trustee Paul's training, or are you just seeing it?
No, I'm just, oh, he does. I mean, I know it happens through, I mean, because I, you see a Yeah, but I see it through a lot of different houses, a lot of different places within the village, and there are a lot of heating and conditioning.
I see a lot of trucks around the village, but I don't see the same house putting a water heater out every week. Is that what you're seeing?
Yes, some places, yes.
Okay, then we can
A water heater out in the front every week?
No, but I mean, if they have a company, they you they usually that question that
They shouldn't be disposing of their company's materials in our residential pickup. That's what's prohibited. So if that's happening, that's a violation. I
Then it's a regular violation in a lot of different places.
And we should be able to
This will give us the authority to enforce them.
And because, because they have to call flood and give their address where the stuff is located theoretically, we could even lean on the garbage company and say, okay, how many times has resident X called in for this type of thing? Now, the thing that they're not going to know is if they got a regular agreement with people in town that live here that are strappers, and they call and say, hey, it's Thursday, I got a water heater, I'll put it out on my driveway, you gotta come and get it. Because then they're not disposing of it in refuse, they're letting the scrap guy go get it, but again, is that contributing more to traffic? I don't know, but I mean, that kind of stuff does happen as well. I'd be guilty of it. There's a guy in town that comes and picks up the scrap and I replace the dishwasher and I call him and he comes and gets it.
You guys read this different. I just read it as you can't have like a rollaway dumpster.
Right.
I mean, you
Like you can even order a You can order an extra can as a resident.
Right. And if I call uh flood brothers and say, I've got a refrigerator I need to toss out, there's usually like a twenty-five dollar charge, and I think the same goes for water heaters and whatever it may be, so if I, if I call, I pay it, they know they're picking it up, even if it's weekly, that's still an amount allowable by regular residential entity.
Okay, it does indicate that the person's operating a business, and it contributes to the neighbors. And it's something, I guess it sits on all week, but there's already village regulations against it.
I think, I think that this would give us the room to have those discussions when and if there was
Because they have the ability to pay an extra amount of money to have it picked up. And then I know it's limited, I think, as to how many a month that you can do that.
Right.
Unless you pay extra, but if they're willing to pay extra, it's allowed, is what I'm saying.
The garbage company would not be our enforcement, but if the complaint, the complaining neighbor would be the enforcement.
And this would give us the authority or the teeth to say, okay, this is a problem.
Or if it's a resident driving by the same licenses and repeatedly, what looks like commercial garbage, then we can investigate.
I mean, I mean, if they're dragging it out at garbage day, it's there, if it's sitting there seven days, it's something that's different, but um I I mean, our businesses are doing, so our businesses are doing, so.
I guess let's just try to figure out what the nuisance is. If I put it out the night, let's say I'm a H D A C guy, I put it out the night before trash, the rest of my trash, and I've got an agreement, it'll be picked up, it's usually picked up by seven AM or eight AM in the morning, my closet.
Yes.
No, but I think that's
We have to look, we have to look at the companies, because most companies take the broken furnaces and they return them to the supply house.
Right.
They don't throw them out, they get credit. So I'm saying if a contractor is continuously putting out that you know of, then they need to be notified, because he could turn that into the supply houses and they strip them for parts and they give him a credit or rebate or uh credit on his next charge. So I, it's hard to believe that a contractor's doing that weekly.
And and
It really is.
For, just, just to kind of rein this back in respectfully, we can sit up here and come up with a million reasons what's a nuisance and what's not a nuisance. I think we need to just stick to the facts here, and as that line is written in this ordinance, I think it's a good line unless, I mean, unless the board feels otherwise. I mean, if you, if the board feels strongly, we can pull that line out. That, and that's it, but I don't want to get into the semantics of bidding what's the nuisance and what's not.
I just take this line in the example um that trustee Paul Strini was giving. So long as they're following the rules and regulations of residential trash pickup and it's out the night before, gone when trash picks it up the next day, that's within guidance of this, then they're within guidance. It's a different issue and there are different ordinances if they're rollaway or if they've got trash sitting out for multiple days because it's just piling up, right? I think in that case, that's a different
That's different. But otherwise, it's allowed for them to do it, and I just wanted to make sure that that can be done because businesses.
Any other concerns?
Okay. So I will entertain a motion uh twenty-two dash eleven, an ordinance of, or uh ordinance amending the regulation for governing home occupations with removing E two as discussed by this board in proper grammatical text. Please follow the, the minutes. Please, thank you. Doing great parallel structure.
I appreciate that most legal contracts follow that, so.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion of that fact.
Oh.
I have a first. I have a second. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Thanks for the discussion. Davis, start.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Palestine.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Mr. Kell.
I'm staying.
Ms. Ford.
Hi. I is one of them saying.
And now.
Mr. Mayor, I think I should do that, so I can say my voice for this one, so you can be independent. Now, we would ask for your consideration of an ordinance establishing regulations governing the keeping of chickens on residential properties and we have a, um, this has gone to the planning and zoning commission. Josh has given you a lot of history on this, and we've attempted to write something that would be restrictive and give you several options. So there are several options in there. Let's say numbers that can be children, and you'll also notice items G and H on the agenda, which only uh become relevant if item that is successful. So with that, if you'd like any summary, we're gonna, Josh summarizes it, or you can just start with questions. Where, where is G and H? On the agenda.
On the agenda.
I don't hear nothing, they're not supplements in the packet.
So G and H on the app and that could
Right, understood, but I was looking, sorry, I was looking at A, B, C on the supplement, I'm like, I don't know.
I I would like to hear, I mean, it was, it was an approval of forty-two. Um, so I I would be interested to hear what some of, what the opposition was. And then I just was curious if there was any testimony at the um at the uh hearing.
Mr. Rock, would you care to indulge us?
Who knows? We, we did, if you planning and zoning commission deliberate quite, I think, uh thoroughly on the setbacks and screenings, uh to make sure the neighbors weren't offended by chicken coops in backyards. The two major points that we discussed, I think, uh
Chairman Rock, I'm sorry, can you speak up a little bit? We have some people online.
I apologize. Uh, we had two, two of our larger points that we did discuss. There was a point brought up about fees, as to what the fees for chicken coops were going to be used for. Uh, this is just a revenue generating tax. And then there was also the largest sticking point that we discussed was uh the definition of the rear half of a side yard. Uh, for some of our residents that have corner lots and if they want a chicken coop in the backyard on a corner lot, does that stick the chicken coop right up on the sidewalk? Like with the rest of the setbacks that are already described in the ordinance, it has to be so many feet from the side yard, so many feet from a residence. And with, in conjunction with this screening that is also required, pushes the mesh, et cetera.
I think it's somewhere.
That was really just uh some of the names.
So despite all the conversation back and forth and the dialogue, they just still didn't feel it was appropriate?
Uh mostly it was the the fee structure, um there was a displeasure on that note from one of our commission members, um and then just the side yard, corner lot. Discretion there.
Okay. Was there any conversation about possibly excluding corner lots?
Oh, man.
I'm just curious.
No, you can't.
I don't recall any conversation.
Okay.
On that topic.
Since that was the sticking point then.
Well, no, but it's, we get into the same sticking point with putting up sheds and all kinds of things because of
This is similar kinds, similar definition.
Okay.
We had, we, prior to this board taking uh ta- taking their seat, we had intense discussion on sheds and what was because our code previous to the regulations that you see here, which mirror the shed one, didn't reference side yard, corner lot, anything. It was just, you have front yard and backyard if you live down the road, like a regular lot, but you didn't have really a backyard and a corner lot. And so that's where this Because people were putting up sheds and they were illegal because they weren't in the backyard, because you don't have a backyard. So that's where this is. So what are we thinking? What are we feeling? Uh let's uh, let's talk about some chickens.
It mentioned setting a fee though. I don't want to set a, is it an operations fee or a licensing fee? I don't really care for that.
Yeah, I, I pay for twenty-five dollars a year.
See, I I don't like the annual idea. I like that some of the villages had it one time. I can get like one-time application fee because we've got to file it, we've got to make sure everything is in order.
Yeah.
I get that once, and then every time you want to renew, you've already been accepted and approved. That's where I was like, annual fee every year, I didn't like that either.
But that would give your code enforcement officer a shot at uh seeing, okay, so I bought a license ten years later, I don't mean chickens, it's all dilapidated.
No, no, you have to reapply every year. We shouldn't be charged a fee every year.
The problem is that you can't we, we have an issue with business registration, so we don't, we don't give a person or a reason to reapply.
If they don't have an annual renewal, then they can't have the chickens.
But how would you know? If the, if the neighbors just know that you got a permit or, you know, license the first year, they're not gonna knock on your door on, you know, maybe seventh, twenty twenty-three and just to check, did you get your license renewed before I called in? And complain about your chickens, that you shouldn't have a license.
I will say that staff will, just like we do with your other annual license. Ask them for the renewal documents over here. What it has to do with regular licenses, for example.
That is an example, but, okay, so how much, realistically, I apologize for making you talk, but how much time is it gonna, is it gonna take for staff to do this every year? Like, you know, if it's a twenty-dollar fee.
It just depends if you have three hundred licenses, it'll take a while.
No, we're not.
There's only ten or twenty chicken licenses, it's how long does that take?
But, okay, but we're always talking about administration like, like time and that kind of stuff, and so again, I'm not, I'm not saying it needs to be a hundred bucks a year, but you know, I'm, I'm really, to me, I'm okay with a twenty-dollar fee every year if you want to have the chickens, just making sure that everybody's about, about reapplying.
Jenny Eastundy and Sugar Grove all do one time, she don't know what Westundy doing.
Sugar Grove's big, Elton's got the boat, Eastundy's uh large.
Sugar Grove.
So bigger than any, sure.
I was originally suggesting seventy-five annually, and then you talked me down to seventy-five, and I thought, yeah, I can do it. I would assume the staff's time.
Okay, so how long does it take to reapply? Five minutes in a, in a ten-minute phone call?
But then they have to go out and inspect as well, right?
No.
Yeah, and if there's complaints, they have to go out and inspect.
If there's complaints, our building department's going out to inspect, yes. So does it need for any other ordinance violation?
But like reissuing the license, just out of curiosity, reissuing the license every year, is that an opportunity for the village to go out and say, okay, yeah, it's in good, it's in good shape, we're gonna regrant, we're gonna grant you the license again? Because my, my, my question is, is what happens if the village just rubber stamps this stuff every year, right? You applied last year, you had it this year.
Right.
Maybe you don't, maybe your neighbors like you and they don't want to cause trouble, they don't want to complain or whatever, but then we drive by and we go, what the hell is this? You're, you got chicken stuff all over the place.
So what is the village's role going to be in, in the village? Not, so there are two fees that are discussed in here. There is a building permit for the coop. That has to be signed off by a building inspector.
If you're building.
If, if you're building a coop.
But I guess
You could buy one.
You can buy these coops, a lot of people.
Still in this regulation, you still have to get a building permit and it still has to be inspected. Even if I buy a pre-made coop, according to our regulation, I have to get a building permit, just like a shed, I can buy a pre-made shed, but I still need to have a building permit and they come and inspect it. So that's one akin with that fee. That's a one-time fee, they came and inspected. Who on our staff is licensed to ensure that the chickens are at an animal welfare health to justify a fee every year that they're gonna go out and inspect and sign off that, yep, that's agricultural standards? Because that's what we're talking about for time and staff and we're not having a rubber stamp. I get it as an administration at the very beginning to say, there's paperwork we have to file, we have to update our records, we have to understand who has what licenses that we're under. Whatever that number that we've set as a village is, how many licenses they get if this passes, you get it if this passes. Year two, what does that fee pay?
Keeping them modest.
Yeah.
Keeping them modest.
I would want somebody to go out there and make sure that the chicken coop isn't falling apart. Um, that there's a smell in the yard because they're not taking care of it. Um, and if that happens just once a year, to make sure that it's that, we, they're not looking at the welfare of the chickens and inspecting them, so I, you know, it's just the general welfare.
Because you could bet, you could bet in any populated people are gonna go out swinging, they're gonna build a coop, they're gonna load it with chickens, two years later, they're gonna run out of steam and it's gonna start getting dilapidated, not taken care of.
Who on staff is responsible for verifying that?
I would think that would be our code enforcement officer.
Our code enforcement is
We're gonna buy and care over all of you.
No, I mean, the only thing we can do is if we see something that looks unhealthy or dangerous, uh or if the chickens are in a harsh way, an average person can see a really drastic situation, and that's the only thing we can report to, how to help them.
Just like we would with dogs or other family pets, or speaking of a chain to a tree with no water and it's
Well, we don't charge licenses for owning dogs.
So, but the county does.
Yeah, county does.
Your dog, your, no, your dog tags is your, is what your
And it does a rabies tax, right?
Yeah, that's the rabies.
And you, and you're paying for the shop here, that, and part of that fee goes to the county.
Right, so you're paying every year for your dog.
So then to your point, if uh, say I get chickens two years from now, I don't have chickens anymore, I give up my permit, it'll be my dilapidated chicken coop.
You know people will, you know they will.
Right, but it's the same
But if I give up my permit, then I'm just gonna have my
My permits have the chickens.
Right, you're gonna start putting bikes in it and
But, right.
Equipment.
But in order to have the chicken coop on your property, you have to follow the zoning regulations that are here, fee or no fee. And so if you have a dilapidated chicken coop in your backyard because you used to raise chickens, it's gonna be a zoning code violation because it's not it's not a proof structure, it's not a shed, so it's gonna be against the zoning code.
Nicely structured, I mean, the same permit, it's in here, I got
And it's still, it's still activated, it's no different than like a shed falling down. That's, that's what I'm getting at, because he's
Building retrievers.
Yeah, that's exactly, exactly. Yeah, since nineteen Yeah, no, I'm with you. That's what we're trying to prevent, right?
I'm just saying you could have that chicken coop on your property if you originally had it.
Right, and then two years from now, I give up my permit, because I don't want to have chickens anymore, it's gonna sink, it's way over my head, but I'm gonna leave my dilapidated structure right over there.
You know.
Yeah, so, so that would be enforced in the same exact way that the dilapidated shed would be, which is write them a warning, write them a notice of violation, eventually it would go to the court system if they don't comply.
Okay.
Um, but they would at least have to keep it in good maintenance, you know, not uh falling apart, uh or they can get rid of it.
It's like a sheet cover or something. It's like a sheet cover or something.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions, concerns, comments, discussion? This is a big one. This is a game changer.
How many chickens can you have?
Four.
That's the next discussion.
Four. That one, that one just called out. Wait, the two next discussions are the number of licenses and the fee for the license.
Okay, so C one, four chickens.
Four.
Can you put back your pitch name?
Absolutely.
I think four is. Well, look at Eastundy or Elgin or, everybody except Genoa allows it. Four is your limit.
Right, and, and also I did look up all the other, I, I have them up, all the other ordinances. Genoa, you can have six, but Genoa also in the regulation that you have to at least be on, I think it's I'll look, it's a half acre or one acre property. I think it's a half acre property.
Yeah, I don't want to fight anymore.
No, I'm just saying they, they can allow more chickens. It's a bigger.
Oh, I get that.
I'm not looking to get the.
You should ask this lady, wait.
Seriously.
Ma'am, can you enlighten us? How many, Ms. Weber, sorry. Can you give us an idea of how many chickens, like just yourself, how many would you want to have in your chicken coop?
Well, the most ever. I mean, I know that the, the village is all, I said four, so four is fine. But I mean, the most I would ever want, um, on our lot, we have a pretty good sized lot. It's all fenced in would be six. That would be the ultimate. Cause you know, you have chickens that, you know, chickens don't lay for more than about two years. So you know, then they get older, they stop laying, um. So yeah, no, no more than six though, because, um, you know, I have friends that have chickens. In fact, I have quite a few friends that have backyard chickens and they, they said four to six is a really nice number because they keep each other warm in the winter. So if you have too few of chickens, you know, you, that can be problematic. So yeah, that's what.
Somebody else's sheet.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Feeling here, guys? Should we, uh, should I entertain a motion establishing the regulations governing keeping chickens? Or do you guys want to talk about it some more?
I feel like I'm losing my mind. Where did we call out the fees in specific regulations?
We haven't yet.
We didn't.
So, so we need to, we need to, we need to pass the ordinance to establish the fact that chickens can exist here in the village. And then we can set the number of licenses and then we can set the number of, uh, uh, the fee. Okay, but we need it to set, we need to have a hard number here before we do this with the ordinance of how many chickens are allowed to have.
Right, we should give them five.
I think I'm seeing a five and I raised two, three. Kidding, I'm kidding.
I'm, I'm okay with four. That's, that's my thing. I think that we can always go back and change this. I think, I think that we're starting this and we've changed ordinances in the past. Let's see how it goes. I just think that we should start with, you know, I fall in line with what everybody else is doing.
I feel like every other community's at four except for one. That has, that requires bigger lots.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so, so being the fact that we, okay, we're all good with four, I'm going to entertain.
Well, there's more questions.
I have questions.
Oh, more questions in common. I haven't gotten there yet. Go ahead.
Well, um, number nine, um, all waste produced by chickens must be collected in a storage, fully covered structure with a lid over the entire storage container, which will be disposed of in a sanitary manner. How often? They can do it once a month, once a year? I mean, there's.
Well, but the same, it says right here in number six, it says that creation of noxious or offensive odors included orders, orders not limited to or from regulations keeping chickens. So they can't, they can't have a dumpster of the stuff or a container of the stuff and annoy their neighbors at the same. So like they're going to have to do it in a responsible fashion because they can't, they can't be causing trouble with it.
The second is you smell chicken. Smack coming from your neighbor's yard, you're going to call right away.
Yeah, but I'm, I mean, my thought is to add weekly, there's something in there. I mean, just so that there's something.
I don't know how much a chicken, like.
I didn't know either.
Regulate something I don't understand.
Yeah, you can't.
I'm sorry. There's enough of this, there's enough built into this that says that you can't be a nuisance to your neighbor. So like, I'm not going to, you know, give a bad week or whatever. I mean, think about it. We don't, we don't regulate how much they got to pick up their dog or
Yeah.
stuff in the backyard. But again, if it, if it's all over their yard, creating a safety issue or stinking, then they get complaints and they deal with it.
Okay, all right, I see that.
Ms. Ms. Fodor, you raise your hand. I'm sorry, I'm going to get a picture of her.
I have a question that dovetails nicely with that one. First of all, does Flood Brothers allow, um, chicken waste disposal in our contract? Is that, I mean, I know dog waste goes in there, but chicken waste has, it's very, very high in nitrates and it creates, um, a lot of stink.
There's no prohibition for it.
Okay, and then what if, it, there is nothing in here that prohibits somebody from just bringing it in the house and flushing it down the toilet? And I was asking trustee Coke, who says our, our sanitary system could not handle that. Should, is there a need for something in our regulations stating that you shouldn't flush it in your toilet? Well, but if it's not stated.
So how, I, I get what you're getting at, but how do we even enforce that?
Second is true. I think that's enforced in the, it shall be disposed of in a sanitary manner.
Which includes not flushing it in your.
That's not a sanitary manner to dispose of chicken waste.
Yeah.
People waste, but I don't think they would understand.
I, I think trustee Fodor, I don't think it would be a bad idea because our sewer system is pretty fragile here.
Yeah.
I don't think a bad, be a bad idea right there where it says sanitary, which does not include flushing.
And in no case shall it be disposed to the village sanitary system.
Right, which also includes our drains. Because I think my neighbors, kids do all kinds of things, but if it goes into the.
Only rain.
Exactly.
So, um, to trustee Fodor, trustee Paul Strini, the way Dundee has the waste storage and removal listed in their ordinance is that it's very similar to what we have, but in the end they have an additional sentence of no more than three cubic feet of manure shall be stored on the permitted tract of land. I don't know how you go and measure what it is, but they at least have some type of physical limit of how much may be stored on it. I'm throwing out a suggestion that another village has put in, if that's something that you could consider.
How good are you measuring that stuff?
Oh, I took a lot of math in college.
Phil stepping off of his coops.
How he's going to get any version. That's, that's not, I don't, I don't think you're probably not going to get one of that considered.
Yeah.
Plus it's not a nuisance, I think. We got to go with the proper limit.
I think if it becomes a problem, we adjust it. I think that this is a, you know, we all, we all were in agreement. Most of us were in agreement that we were going to try this. And so I think that we are going to try it and then we take instructive or negative criticism and we adjust accordingly. Because this one may not last, right? Or may, who knows?
Well, and we want to make sure that we have room for correction as we see how things work out. To provide that balance for the individual freedoms to have their chickens, but also the community good of.
Trustee Paul Strini, do you have any other concerns? You have a lot of red.
That was just so I could find things in here, but, um, I know it scares you. Um, Noah, I'm, I'm, the second page of the ordinance, um, D three, we talk about the size of the area and we look at, it says a minimum of four square feet for each chicken. That's, that's four, that could be, it's got to be at least sixteen square feet then.
Right.
For four chickens, but we allow it for fifty feet or fifty square feet total. There's a huge difference. I mean, four square feet for one chicken, I mean, kind of put that out, that's really a small area.
I think we'd go for this from somebody else. I don't think that we just came up with a four foot.
That's correct, yeah. So the minimum, if you have four chickens, would be sixteen square feet. And then the maximum would be fifty square feet.
So it's a difference as to whether or not they want to live in a tiny coop or a luxury coop, I guess.
I know, I'm just thinking about, I mean.
There's also.
For the animals themselves and for, you know, safety purposes and supposedly not abused. I mean, it's a little bitty area. Versus, I mean, fifty square feet or do we need fifty square feet? Is that too big then for four chickens?
Oh, no, it's just saying you can't go any harder than that.
Then why not twenty-five feet? If it's a minimum of four. I'm just, you know, if, if we can contain it a little bit more, but I just, four just seems so small. And, you know, so sixteen feet, to me, that just seemed really, really.
I don't want. Trustee Paul Strini, if I can keep in mind that the coop is.
The size of a land.
And then there's a pen area that they can roam in.
Okay.
And there's, there's, you know, regulations on the pen.
But not everybody has to have the pen, so they're going to be inside. Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm a little concerned about. If they're not able to get out at all, they've got this little area. I, I just, I was just questioning the size and fifty square feet.
According to sites like Hobby Farms and some of the others, they list three or four square feet for chickens.
That's different. I mean, I know nothing about chickens, so. No, that's okay.
Okay, to your question, on page sixty-three.
Yeah.
Um, that would be D three B. Um, a minimum of ten square feet of floor space must be provided for each chicken if they are not allowed access to a larger fenced area. Does that?
That supersedes it, that supersedes it. That would give you, that would give you the fifty square, that would give you forty square feet, which is maximum fifty. So that, that, that addresses what you were saying.
So, so they have to have more space indoors than this small, if there's outdoor. But if there isn't outdoor, then indoor needs to be here. That's why I'm reading it.
It does continue on in the next, it says four square feet of floor space must be provided for each chicken if allowed access to a larger fenced area.
Yes, that's at the top of each sixty-three, there's three of the regulations. It must be provided for each. Does that address your?
So they're able to get out there, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I mean, as was talked about tonight is, you know, keeping them closer in smaller areas helps to keep them warm. And it's about two, but they still need to be.
Because they aren't living creatures.
Okay. Is there anything else? I'm not trying to rush this along. Very excited.
And, and, um, sales prohibited then, so this is strictly for home use only. And I know there are some cultures that use the chickens and I know even, you know, suburbs close to Chicago and in Chicago, I think they allow chickens as well. Um, because they come from countries where they had their own chickens and they had their own eggs and they ate their chickens. Um, and so what we've heard tonight, they only can lay eggs for, uh, two years or so and then, um, eating the chickens.
You can take it to.
To slipper cell and they will do.
Or to a farm.
To a farm or whatever you want to do, but you cannot butcher it on your property.
And you're not selling the eggs to anybody else. It's strictly for home use.
One question on clarification on the coops. We don't call it out in here. I think the building permit is a good idea, but there are some coops purposely built to be able to be moved around here. There are some ordinances in the villages that you, that you listed as examples where they do call out that a portable coop is, so long as it, it meets the requirements of a coop is allowed, would that be allowed within this ordinance?
As long as it stays within the requirements for all of the setbacks.
And within offset backs and everything, but if it's one, like it's in this part of the yard, I can move it to the other part of the yard.
I don't think there's anything in here requiring it to be stationary, so.
Okay, because it goes through the building permit, so I just want to make sure that our building department, that does the permits, understands that it can't be a mobile structure. It doesn't have to be.
I haven't thought about that. That's a good.
It might have to be tied down though, because a shed has to be tied down. Like you can't just have.
Oh, yeah, yeah, temporarily tied down. Then you can move it tied down again.
Right, but the, this isn't to the shed ordinance. This is its own building.
It'll be a building code. There is, there's no shed, you know, building code. It's all in the international building code, so it says it has to be tied down somehow.
Whenever the coop has to be, it meets regulations, yes, but I know that they sell purposely for the entirety of their product. Especially for home bases, it saves yards.
Any other questions?
Repeat then what we're going to be doing today and then what this.
Yeah, so, so what this does, what this does is this establishes within the zoning code, the allowance of chickens in a residential area. We are going to be setting the, uh, number of chickens to four. We are also going to include in section C ten that the, uh, disposal of waste is not to be in any way, shape, form done through the village sanitary system, whether it be in the toilets in your home or in the drains outside on the street.
Just not just sanitary, also. Store.
Store. Yeah, so I want to, yeah. In a grammar, uh, grammar efficient way and parallel format. So with that, I can't believe I'm doing this. I will entertain a motion, I entertain the creation of ordinance twenty-two dash twelve that will forever limit me establishing the regulation of establishing, uh, governing and keeping the chickens in residential properties in the villages. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Clerk, I'm baited breath.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Coles.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Fuller, Ms. Fodor, sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Ponce. Motion passed by.
All right, yay. Now let's set the number of licenses for chickens. This is a pilot program. That's what we agreed to or talked about to begin with. How, uh, how do, again, this is not a static number. This is something that we can change. For the first year of this program, because we're getting our legs underneath us, where, where, what does the board feel?
Something somewhere between five and ten.
I, I like that.
Because it is a pilot program, we don't agree.
I don't. I know.
I would say ten.
Ten. Ten? Okay, I got ten on this side.
Yeah, as, as you say, it's, uh.
That's forty chickens.
Yeah.
Ten.
Okay. No, this is, this is just how many licenses we're going to call.
I'd say this is like where there's our first shot at it, where.
I think ten is good. Sugar Grove's pilot program is eight.
Yeah, we can revisit if there's a need to revisit.
I mean, the ordinance is twelve.
Five is still good.
Twenty-two dash twelve. We've already done it. We might as well go to twelve.
So the, so the village president is right, right? Twelve as our, I just heard. Mr. Hedges.
That's what I heard as well, trustee.
Could we?
Ten or twelve?
Five in the first six months and then raise it to ten?
I, I just, this is ten. I just, I think that next, we'll set a calendar reminder to review this next year at this date. I'll remember this date. A lot of things have happened on this date for me.
Yes.
All right, all right. So I will entertain a motion to set the number of licenses for keeping chickens in the village of capture in residential areas to ten. So who, that's first. Any questions or comments? Throw a couple please.
Ms. Fodor.
No.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coles. Mr. Coles.
I'm thinking.
Aye. I heard you. I don't have a bearing on names.
Mr. Matt. Ms. Ponce, no. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion passed four two months.
Yeah, all right, here we go. Motion to set the annual license fee. I, I was, I know I don't get a vote in this. I just, I don't think twenty dollars is that unrealistic for this. I think it covers staff time. I just, I think it, to, to other points that have run up on the board, I think it, for lack of another terminology, keeps people honest, knowing that they have to reapply and put some skin in the game. Again, I don't think it's that that outlandish to expect twenty dollars for this, for staff time for inspections or like something made. I just don't, we're talking, it's, it's not a big money grab. I mean, it's two hundred dollars for the village.
So are you saying that on every application, staff will go out and be inspecting?
I would, I would, my opinion, my opinion would be, that would be my expectation as long as it's ten. You know, if we expand this program where it's significant, I think that my expectation might be a little bit different. But I think because this is a new program and we need to evaluate the pilot. You know, I think that that, I, I don't think that that's an unrealistic expectation, the strategy.
We could certainly do it for the first year too and see where it's.
And then at that point, we might even be able to reevaluate the license fee as well to say, okay, we don't need to do the inspections because this is why this is what we found.
Which fee has this village instituted?
Uh, the garbage, the garbage was just rolled back a few years ago when we switched the flood.
No, no, we've got a reduced fee.
Exactly, you, you just asked your exact word, exactly, just like going Walmart, just roll back save.
That means, that means counted, I said, which fee, fee that the village has instituted, have we, let me rephrase that, taken off?
The business licenses, we stopped them.
You don't think people fill out a business license?
Well, they used to pay it, but we don't have. Because there's so many other things that are regulating it. I understand your point, Mr. Kelly, I get it, I just don't think that a twenty dollar fee is that unrealistic. If the board feels otherwise, that we should just issue a license without any fee attached to it, I'm not going to die in this hell again, it's not a money grab, it's two hundred dollars.
Can we ask? Because I, I get it.
Sure, absolutely. Sure, sure. So, Ms. Weber, do you feel, as our, as our expert witness this evening?
Yes.
Do you, do you feel that twenty dollars is unrealistic expectation for us to collect for our license fee annually?
No, what is the initial license fee? Is that seventy-five or has that been established?
No, just twenty bucks, that's all we were thinking.
But the.
But the building permit would be an additional cost.
That's what I was referring to, I guess, the, the permit.
No, it would depend on the number of inspections, would probably just be one, so it would be seventy-two dollars.
So a one-time fee.
So the one-time investment, if you're going to do this the first year, would be ninety-five dollars, right?
Ninety-two.
Less than a hundred bucks, plus your coop and your chicken. And then twenty dollars after the back.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel that that's unreasonable, I think it keeps people, it keeps the people who are really serious about doing it and doing a good job maybe, because they know that someone's going to come every year to check. You know, so, I mean, that, I don't have anything, I, I think it's, I, I would welcome that, I guess, so, um, that's, that would be fine.
You're going to save the twenty dollars and what you don't spend on eggs anyway, right?
Good point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Weber. Okay, how do we feel? Twenty, good?
At least one hundred and twenty annual.
Annual, the board is.
Yeah.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to set the annual fee for a license for keeping chickens within the village of Hampshire to twenty dollars annual. So first.
Seconded.
I have a second, do you seem very enthusiastic about this?
No.
I know.
Okay. Okay, first, second discussion, comments, concerns? Quote, call, vote, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Coles.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
No.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Palestine. Because I thought you did all the other stuff, but, um, it's already been passed and so we have to, yeah, um, yay.
Yay.
It's certainly not yay. Mr. Robinson. Motion passed four eyes two months.
Oh man, a shooter going, no, I heard. And thank you all for all your deliberations tonight, and at this point, I would ask Mr. Ray to tell you about our May building.
Yes, May was a pretty strong month, start off the fiscal year, left the fiscal year twenty-two monthly averages in there, so you could see compared to how it was the last fiscal year. Sixty-six home permits issued, ten new home permits, which is better than the last two May's. Uh, the building department's very busy right now, you know, you can see two hundred and sixty-two inspections going on, a lot of activity. And we continue to go through our code enforcement process. We did have a very nice compliment from a commercial realtor who said that he was just very pleased with, um, his experience in contacting village administration and setting up a development meeting and, and our willingness to share information and be very, um, uh, make it upfront, but very, uh, know exactly what the process was going to be. So that was nice.
We've had a couple of those in meeting with developers about different, um, different projects or potential projects, so hats off to the board, hats off to the staff for totally, and, and all the work that the BDC is doing to try to make this a business-friendly community, and just lead the charge. Because it's really made a huge difference, because it used to be, people would walk into this room and be like, oh, hey? We can't seem to figure out what the right answer is, so now, it's, it's, the process, for lack of a terminology, is pretty, fully bulletproof, I mean, there's certain exceptions, but it's pretty well laid out and the answers are always the same project to project. And, and it's a very, very smooth process. I mean, there's, there's developers that come in and say, we dealt with other communities in the area and we left there because we heard our, you guys are, are to deal with. So it's just a testament of the work that, that we're doing, so.
The only thing I'd like to add to that is that that doesn't mean there will be pushovers, we pushed back pretty hard and we're pushing back right now with a couple of them.
If, if I get asked, just curiosity and I, you know, just what you think of, of new home permits coming up, I mean, is there an expectation that they will, this is going to start rolling in as we move into the, you know, June, July?
We, if I could project what would happen with our economy, I have a better feel for that, I'm not, I'm not confident in the housing starts, to be honest. Housing starts were down in April. Inventory is still very low for existing homes, so there's still demand, uh, but certainly interest rates now, thirty-year fix are above five percent now, double what they were a year ago.
I heard somewhere that because of the interest rates that have increased, it's decreased people's buying power by about a hundred thousand dollars.
It's a lot.
It's starting, I mean, it's pretty substantial, what's just happened in the last few months, so.
The builders are telling me that they're not seeing a slowdown in demand, so there, and because there's not enough inventory in existing homes, that means new home sales are still strong, but they are down.
Okay.
And I think there's a lot of anticipation that we're, it, it, I think July fifteenth is going to be a key date, as we'll see the CPI. And we'll know if we've been in a recession since January or not, this is going to be a big day.
Are other municipalities that have building projects, I mean, are they doing well? Are we right, I'm kind of on par with them, not that you could have known that, but just if you had heard from other.
Well, there's, there's activity, Inbury has a lot of housing still going on.
Okay.
Deer Horton, there's still, in fact, they just approved another large development, you come up Deer Horton, I think six or seven hundred more homes. Uh, Huntley continues to build, although they're slowing down, they're being a lot more restricted, restricted, in fact, that's where we're hearing most of the developments, that we went to Huntley and they're not, I wouldn't say they're not friendly, they're just more, uh, more, um.
Reserved.
Yeah, I don't even know if reserved is the right.
But the, the demographic of Huntley is completely different than ours, I mean, they're built well.
But that's our competition really, because that's where the big job projects have been going and now they're coming a little further this way.
But, I mean, they could be, they, Huntley can, can be a little bit more selective in what they want to approve and what they can't, and I'm saying again, I'm not saying that we're pushovers, right? But they can, they can be a little bit more selective in what they're doing because they know that no matter what they approve or don't approve, that the, the commercial side of it is already coming, and that's not going to stop because of their location and that kind of stuff, so.
I get the impression that Huntley's actually trying to slow the process down just because of demand and, and the good news is with us, for sake, that we're flexible. We can go way up this year, which we are, and down next year we have to. Hey, hey, you know, just today I had a conversation with the vice president at Sageville, because we were their second account in Illinois. Uh, Pete in Illinois was the first, we were their first account to use the community board, all their services. So, and we've done a lot of references for them, marketing piece for them, and, and today I had to talk with them. For the first time ever, we had somebody that could not get an inspection in twenty-four hours. Now that turned out to be a payment mistake, and it was an error, um, so just not because they didn't have the staff, but it gave us an opportunity to talk about the staff. They did, the good news is, they hired one of the riot employees from, you know, the, the NBR riot. So he knows the area, he knows the builders and he's really, Patrick's a great inspector. Um, and he's, he's dedicated to building, to the village of Hampshire as of today. And they, they just hired another inspector, so we, we do have to stay on top, I know these are outside services and they're supposed to be scalable, but everybody's having a hard time hiring these things. So we had a good talk about that and it's sure to work. That, that scale with us, Huntley's not been using it as well.
Huntley, Gilberts, Burlington, I mean, there's a lot of people that made the switch, I mean, it goes more than just real estate and developers, people are, you know, other municipalities are watching what we're doing. They see what we're doing and we're doing it right, but. Okay. I have the regular accounts payable in front of us, not to steal your thunder, Mr. Ray. Do we have any questions about the regular accounts payable?
Page sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
Ed Cole, Ward's Officer of the Year, Police Department.
Is that a, a award that was given yet or is that something that hasn't been announced?
It's not been announced.
Are you going to announce in the, the next board meeting or any board meeting coming up or something like that?
Coming up.
We just want to make sure, and hope they have that coming here to commend them.
Orber.
Orber, them, I think that's it.
I heard them.
Them.
Any, any, anything else? No other questions? Yeah, I didn't see any more. Oh, but, there's right.
Oh, yeah. Page seventy-one, sign of honor, inserts for existing monuments.
Yeah, really, our monument signs as you enter the village, they have the old, um, burny brand, brand a few wells, so we, we were able to just replace the inserts without having to replace the whole sign, so now they'll all be branded with our development. We replaced one of them a few months back because it was.
Was there an accident insurance claim? And so in that process, we were able to determine that we could do inserts in our existing signs for less price. We were just going to leave them, but they didn't match, and then somebody gave us some better options. Any other, they look, they look great, actually. Any other motion to approve, what, what, Chris, Chris Lyons?
I just wanted to note that this is the first half of the payment, so the signs aren't in place, the multiples aren't in place yet, you'll see a second payment.
Any other questions? I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of a hundred thirty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and ninety cents. Per second.
This is the smallest, I think, accounts payable I think since I've done. So I kind of like it, like to keep at that pace.
The timing of the meeting is such that like the first of the month bills that all come out didn't make it to the list.
Just wait, but I just like the number.
Those other numbers that you approved tonight, it's, uh.
I know.
About seven hundred thousand dollars, I think.
I'm enjoying, I'm enjoying the, the number right now. Period of time, I see.
Ms. Clerk.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coles.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Palestine. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Mr. Kelly, BDC, uh, BDC will be meeting next Wednesday for our regularly scheduled programming. Um, I would just want to give the board a heads up that you will most likely have applications to consider at the next board meeting. There is an application submitted for consideration to beautification at BDC for both blocks as well as the Rose Garden. Part of that, um, the Rose Garden building, I don't know what else to call it, Mr. Mondi's building, one ninety-nine South State, there we go, one ninety-nine South State. Um, part of that consideration, just so that you're prepared, is I, I, my, my Johnny Carson Futures Year.
It's called Karnak?
Karnak, the great Karnak, uh, you will probably also have to consider an increase in budget funds available for the facade program. Because we are already on, once we approved, depleted a lot of the facade program available for this fiscal year. So there will probably be two things, three things to consider in total. Do you raise the budget to accept the new applications? If you do, you will have most likely two applications.
We'll have to look in the minutes because when that BDC was originally set up, that funding was set up, that I believe never to change. That when we ran out of money, that was it till the following, uh, fiscal, uh, cycle.
And, and the board can decide that?
Mm-hmm.
No, I mean, it was, I think it was decided when the BDC was set up.
No, when the facade program was created, we decided as a board that we wouldn't contribute outside of the funding that was allocated out of the previous year. That was something we did talk about, it's not, it's not inaccurate in that conversation, however, however, again, we are going to have these applications, they're going to go through the process, it'll be up to us to decide if we wanted to do this as a one-time thing, if we want to change the funding amount, whatever, whatever it is we wanted to do, it's still our call.
You followed what Trustee Co said, you verified it was your recommendation, but though, I'm just raising it so that you're aware in the next board meeting that those are most likely. Is there an application that I've not?
Oh, it's just those two as far as I know. Have they received it yet, Linda?
So, we may have received it.
So we've only received two applications.
Yeah.
If I can just ask, how can we accept more applications if there's more money?
We have, we're not, we're not zero at forty-seven thousand.
Right, we're not zero now.
Okay.
But with the current applications that are in, forty-seven may not be enough to cover what the applications are asking. So it, there are multiple ways you can go about it, as Trustee Co said, if the, if the board at that time says, or next board meeting says we aren't giving more funds to it, then when you go to the applications to look at those, you know you have forty-seven thousand and change to allocate, if you so choose, to the projects that have applied. So it's not that we're zero, it's that the current balance would not, based on the applications I've seen, cover what the potential asks.
And because, and because we're not at zero, the applications still go through the process. To Trustee Co's, they still go through the process, the, the BDC and the beautification will make a recommendation to the village board at their funding level. And then we are the keepers of the money, and so we would decide if we would allocate X amount of the forty-seven thousand dollars remaining to each project, one project over the other, to say, okay, maybe we have a, you know, additional funds we want to allocate for this purpose. That's going to be up to us, because as the recommend, the BDC and the beautification are recommendation boards to last period, and then we're the keepers of the money.
And the recommendation is on each application, so they look at, they'll look at the application in and of itself, let's say the application is for ten thousand dollars. They will say they either agree that it meets the needs of the facade program or it doesn't. And if they recommend it to go forward, they give a funding recommendation that they don't look at based on the amount of money we have left to be, but then recommend this funding, they're just saying this project should get this. Funding because.
They have no problem raising, I'm just.
Right, no, no, I just had a talk with you how, how those committees are approaching it, it's based on a, on a silo project at the time, now in the discussions, and I only speak for BDC because I don't sit in on the beautification. There is a discussion on how does this then affect the potential for future applications, that was part of the original discussions on these past ones. Um, and so that is taken into consideration, but a recommendation isn't necessarily given because of funds available. Uh, or to a level of funding, at least, not to my knowledge.
Well, I think the conversation would change if we were at zero dollar, we would probably say, look, we're out of the money. At that point, so as an example, if there's a third project for a, a, a business that we're not going to name, let's see, comes in after this exercise. We're, there's no room at the end, right, so we would say, you know, we're out of the money for the year, I would think, and then maybe consider applying next year or something like that.
So a point of correction on that one. Uh, if we were at a zero balance, then the, the, the different procedure would be, the beautification at BDC would still look at an application, but the ask would be for the village to increase the funding to consider an application. It's not like there's zero funds, so.
Well, historically, what we've done in that instance where we've said, okay, well, that, we, we, we would want to take the next year's budget.
I think we take it to the next fiscal year.
Yeah, we've done.
As well as for it, yeah, but I'm just saying in the facade program, as I've read it, there's not a stipulation that says when the facade program is at a zero balance, no other applications.
Right, and in fact, I have encouraged Chairman Swalwell, patient, consider the applications on the variant. And the BDC can consider, but I don't think the BDC should be trying to speculate on which projects get which funding, other than the merits of the case.
Of that individual.
Right, which is what they were instructed the first time, you know, look at this in isolation. Because we gave over fifty percent of our program to one small, two other applications.
Public relations. Public relations.
Our next meeting will be next Thursday, following the BDC, just one day after, um, June ninth at six thirty.
Public works, working. How do they like their new end loader? Good. How do they like the new truck? I saw it the other day, it looks good. Uh, that I don't know. It's your favorite brand. I know. Uh, budget.
No.
New business or other announcements? Um, I have one thing I just wanted to bring up. This is, we'll have to bring it up next year too. I know, I, I think we all got an email from, I mispronounced her last name and I apologize, Michelle Teneos, Teneos, with, um, Congresswoman Underwood's staff. And it was a, an announcement of fifteen projects that got a total of twenty-two point six million funding through the FY twenty-three community project funding process. So what, the way I read that is that project funding process is the Congresswoman can allocate for community projects within her, um, district to automatically be funded as a part of that overall grant. And, um, I don't know if we've ever put in for something like that, but, but there were things funded in there that we've talked about at BDC that I was like, that could have helped get some of that. So one example that I saw was the Huntley Shops on Main. This is almost like a, an incubator, uh, program. The shops will function as a first step for business owners who have been running a home-based or internet-based business down in the downtown area. And they got just under a million dollars for that project. So I, I, I'd like us to, if we have applied, great. If, if we haven't, consider like, how do we get into consideration for that next year? We've, uh, Mr. Hedges and myself have actually met with the Congresswoman a couple of times in our office, um, trying to get an appeal for how we obtain funding for almost anything, um, or get lenders to support from her office for other projects is something we've been working on. Um, the challenge that we have had in the past, um, and that was a goal that we had had for this coming year, we didn't really have our fingers on some of the asks, right? So as you look at, as you look at the projects that are named and they're grants, we don't, we never really had an idea before of, hey, this project, specifically in relation to BDC, this would be great if we could get money for us. Well, and there are others that I think align, like for chief, there's one for the Sandwich Police Department for emergency equipment improvement. And I'm thinking to the, we've talked about in a couple of years, we have to do body cams for the police force. And we were talking about that's going to be an expense that comes out, so that could maybe be something that we put in for help with budget offset. So I, I, I'm not saying we haven't done the work for this, but I just saw this and I thought, man, this could really help with community.
Let me just speak to the process if I could, uh, because these are, at the state level, they call them member initiatives now. Uh, on the, at the federal level, they still call me a left. So, um, she, she did approach us and we asked, how did Pingley Grove get a grant for that new sewer, water treatment plant? Uh, I think it was three million dollars, maybe six million.
It was expensive, it was a lot of money.
And, uh.
And we got denied.
And she, well, she told us this story that, you know, they come to me sometimes where they, I don't think she said they need to vote, when somebody else declines to take their funding, and they say, we have three million dollars, you have a project to spend it on, it has to be in this program. And she looked in her file and there was an application from Pingley Grove, and that's the number, and that's the program it was for, and got funded, boom, like that. So we said, how do we do that? She said, well, submit several grant applications to, and they're not full grant applications, they're just like a, a paragraph summary with a dollar on it. So Josh put together four or five of those, we sent over.
Uh, last year, I think we did four, this year we did two. I know one of them was Stormwater Project.
Yeah, we've been looking at, we've been looking at infrastructure and, you know, big things. But I think the last time we submitted, I think, I told you, I said, let's do one for a hundred thousand, three hundred thousand and a million. So we, we just have to get lucky when she has, somebody comes to her and either needs a vote, or they say, you know, this, this congressperson declined their project, we have funding available for this. So she doesn't know what it's going to be, we don't either. So it's kind of a luck of the draw, but we have six projects now and they're bold and early, that are there. So we didn't have.
That's great. I, I wasn't, I, I didn't know we had applied for things and I had seen this and so it's great to hear that we're, we're going. I mean, we'll probably have to do that, what, do it over the next.
Yeah, we actually.
December or sometime, because I think our district actually.
Yeah, we actually asked her, we're not part of your district anymore. She said, oh, we're only working with your district now. Um, so they're not working with the future district anymore, but after the election they will. Right up to the election, she's still pushing.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Because that's the way she described it. By the time I get around to federal funding, I don't.
Can you, can you reissue those, those same requests, all six of them?
Oh, yeah.
To the new congressman in the new district?
And we can even, we can come up with more ideas, some of the things you mentioned. I mean, there are specific programs for things like you mentioned, the police department and all. In fact, we are applying for a grant right now for some training, a pretty large training grant.
And we talked, and, and that, again, not stealing Mr. Hedges' thunder or in relation to, um, Congresswoman Underwood. But at Metro West, um, we've started the Small Towns Committee, um, and it's towns that are under ten thousand population. And we met now twice. And this was a subject that came up as how do we remain competitive with grants as it comes from our legislators? Or how, you know, maybe there's a co-op purchasing program, because we talked about things like body cameras and storage and then, uh, intergovernmental agreements to shared services, because as even with buying the hardware, there comes a cost of, who's going to, you know, manage the cloud storage and who has to be trained in the FOIAs and what are you allowed to issue and what are you not allowed to issue? And that's, they say that that's really where the money is, is the storage and the administration of it and that kind of stuff. And so, uh, as we, as we talked about that, it came up with the different grant opportunities. And like, it was actually, uh, Mr. Hedges' suggestion that there should be somebody somewhere in relation that's looking at like a clearinghouse of these grant opportunities to say, okay, your community meets these metrics, you should be applying for these grants. Because a lot of times we find when there, although we get, we, we all get those emails and we get them from, you know, federal, state representatives and, and, and state senators and, you know, and, and it's like, here are all the things you can apply for. And then you click and you spend twenty minutes reading each one of these grant opportunities. And it's only after fifteen or twenty minutes that you realize, well, heck, we don't qualify for that. And so then, and then it's some of the stuff, it's like, you know, you have all these communities that have grant writers on staff, or they pray for grant writers, kind of like we did with Streetscape, you know, to ensure that we would get the grant. And so, I mean, some of these member initiative things are a little easier to apply for. And now that we've identified projects or we have a running list, if you will, it becomes easier to apply for those things on the fly. We didn't have that prior to us meeting. No, and I, I think that's all great. I, I wasn't aware we had put in for it. So when I saw this, I thought it was a good opportunity and I'm, it's.
That's the list I saw last year.
Yeah, that's great to hear that you, that the staff is, is going after that. So thank you for that. We rattle all the cages we can with money, but if somebody on this board sees something that, nobody takes it as like offense. If you guys see something, don't assume that we've seen it. Send it to Jay so that he can go, yeah, either we've applied for it or no, we don't qualify for it, or man, that's a really good idea. You know, we're all in this together and we hope to be the help that we can get.
We lay awake and pray we're going to miss the one that would have helped us. So many emails, it's hard to keep track.
And that's why it's important for you guys to know kind of the process and what we, what they go through. Any other new business or other announcements? I will entertain a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-nine. Questions, comments?
Ms. Fodor? I'm sorry. Mike, could you let me know how I go about applying and, and all the, you know, how long it takes to get?
Yeah, I think, um, I think Mr. Ray will reach out to you, we have your contact information.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you, everyone.
Hi, I'm thinking. Toby's going to jump over this. I said hi.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye. Aye.
Good now, did everybody vote? Can I thank you, Abby, please?